She's hereby convened at four o'clock on this twenty-eighth day of June, June two thousand and twenty-two. Members of the public will be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on www.vb schools dot com, broadcast on VBTV channel forty-seven and on Zoom. It's the school board's protocol to break at five thirty to prepare for the formal session of the school board meeting to begin at six. At five thirty, the school board will conclude its administrative informal workshop to allow the school board and school administration to prepare for the formal session of the school board at six o'clock. Madam Clerk, will you please announce these school board members in attendance?
Thank you Vice Chair Melnick. In the Einstein Lab, we have Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, and Ms. Owens.
Okay, and for the record, Mrs. Weems is joining us via Zoom due to personal travel, and Mrs. Rye is en route. Okay, and with that, school board administrative matters and reports. Does anybody have anything?
Ms. Ryan's here and Mrs. Riggs is en route.
Oh, and Mrs. Riggs is en route. Thank you. I did. Administrative matters.
Throw out the question.
Yeah. I asked if anybody had anything for administrative matters, and I didn't see anything, so we're on to Mrs. Woodhouse.
Well, I would just say we, I assume the superintendent will be addressing graduations in your report tonight. Is that a fair assumption? But I just thought, on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you all for those that you attended, and as we all said to ourselves, it's a reminder of why we do what we do. I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay.
Okay, so our first, our first workshop this evening is going to be staffing update. That is going to be our HR team with Ms. Woodhouse taking lead.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Ryan, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer with the Department of Human Resources. This afternoon, Ms. Anne Glenn Zelznak will present on behalf of the Department of Human Resources a staffing update. Please note, we both will be available to address any questions you have at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Our agenda for today's presentation includes summer school staffing results, an update on early recruitment initiatives, bus driver recruitment campaign, and staffing for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Along with the other goals, the Department of Human Resources especially supports goal four of the Compass Two Thousand Twenty-five Strategic Plan. We are always in search of high-quality, diverse applicants, and our hiring managers also support this goal. Virginia Beach City Public Schools continues to provide summer programs for students at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. School-based administrators were diligently throughout the spring to recommend staff to the Department of Human Resources for summer employment. Middle and high school summer programs began today, while elementary summer programs and extended school year will begin July fifth. The Department of School Leadership, Teaching and Learning, and School Division Services, including fleet, transportation and fleet, and food services contributed to the overall planning to support student participation in summer learning. As of Friday, June twenty-fourth, the Department of Human Resources hired fourteen hundred staff members for the summer programs. This included teachers, teacher assistants, nurses, interpreters, therapists, and security assistants. In addition to these hires, schools will also have additional custodians and food service staff. Please note, the secondary programs began today, and again, extended school year for summer learning camp will begin July fifth. Although we have a few vacancies, we are in a much better condition compared to last year. We began today without any staffing delays. The Department of Human Resources collaborated with the Department of Teaching and Learning and Student Support Services and Business Services to develop a plan for summer school staffing. For a second year, the Department of Teaching and Learning received grant funds from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund to assist with summer program and provide a stipend to the extended school year staff, English as a Second Language teachers, and school counselors. Additional secondary school counselors beyond what is traditionally staffed have been employed to assist students with verifying correct placement in summer sessions. Also, these school counselors will provide direct and indirect services to meet students' academic and social and emotional needs. While we actively seek potential candidates throughout the school year, staffing for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year started in September by identifying potential candidates from our student, teacher, and school counseling intern pools. Each year, the division offers an early commitment incentive for our top critical shortage areas. This year, we awarded thirty-seven early commitment incentives in the areas of special education and math. Ten VBCPS future teacher award winners accepting teacher placements in our schools. School administrators and central office staff assisted with recruitment efforts by attending recruitment fairs and participating in the VB Schools Virtual Spring Job Fair. These recruitment initiatives led to a hundred and eighty-seven letters of intent for instructional staff positions for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. The coordination and collaboration of these efforts continue to generate positive results and will be continued in the future. In addition to our early commitments, we also, we have also staff being promoted to instructional position. As of June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, fifty-seven teacher assistants and substitutes have been recommended for teaching positions along with a hundred and forty-seven new teachers. Also, twenty-five annual contracted teachers who were hired after October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one were also recommended by their school administrators to return for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Having an innovative recruitment plan is key to our success. The Human Resources Department, with the support of school administrators and central office personnel, continue to participate in virtual and in-person fairs locally and throughout Virginia, as well as Pennsylvania, New York, Ohio, North Carolina, and Maryland, just to name a few. In addition to the locations previously mentioned, we also recruit at VBCPS events such as Beach Girls Rock and the African-American Male Summit. In addition to the job fairs, we have a robust print and media campaigns that runs throughout the year. This year, we have continued to utilize QR codes on promotional ads, posters, and flyers to assist interested applicants in navigating to our online application. Radio ads and social media sites have also assisted with getting the word out locally and beyond our current openings, referrals, and recruitment and retention initiatives. Recently, we implemented two new strategies. One of our new recruitment initiatives took place during the Virginia Beach City Public Schools graduation ceremonies. You may have noticed this year, for the first time, the Department of Human Resources in partnership with custodial, food, health maintenance, health maintenance, and transportation services, all distributed flyers seen on this slide about employment opportunities and engaged with families and guests who attended graduation ceremonies. The Department of Human Resources also provided four recruitment slides to be displayed on the big screen before the start of each graduation. As a result, we have seen two hundred and three applications, or new applications, between June fourteenth and June twentieth. In June, we began walk-up Wednesdays here at the School of Mission, Division Building for any applicant who is interested in employment with the division, needs support to complete the online application, has questions about the hiring process, and/or questions about any open positions. Computers are available for completing any necessary paperwork onsite with technical support from nine AM through six PM. Also during this time, applicants who have not completed their applications are contacted and offered support over the phone or invited to the office. Although Wednesdays were designated for walk-up Wednesday assistance, we are certainly open to questions or support at any time throughout the week. Securing bus drivers continues to be a focus. As a spin-off from walk-up Wednesdays, the Department of Transportation, located at sixteen seventy-seven Harper's Road, is also available to meet with applicants Monday through Thursday from seven AM to two PM to provide application support, information regarding CDL training, and discuss the bus driver hiring process. On June twenty-first, there were thirteen trainees who began attending classes. An additional ten will begin training on July fifth, and fourteen more will start July eighteenth. The participant numbers vary based on completed online application, experience, and training requirements. Since May, the increase in bus driver hourly salaries, credit for work experience, paid training, and a three thousand dollar recruitment and retention incentive, we have had a total of eighty-nine new bus driver applications. The marketing plan thus far has included a strong push to social media accounts such as Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, company updates posted to Indeed, Glassdoor, and LinkedIn pages, company updates posted on the Virginia Employment Commission site, email marketing to current applicants, and Hampton Road Show, which is scheduled for July eighth with the HR and transportation staff. The next update about the results of our recruitment initiatives will take place during the July twelfth school board workshop. Mr. Freeman will provide a more extensive update. On Friday, June twenty-fourth, between the hours of ten AM and four PM, the Department of Human Resources held the drive-through recognition ceremony. Of the four hundred and twenty-one retirees, eligible retirees, a hundred and ninety attended the drive-through recognition ceremony. All were welcomed by cheerful staff and music from our local DJ. Retirees were presented with a certificate of appreciation, retiree yard sign, a bunk cake, and a variety of other beach apparel to enjoy during retirement. It is truly a fun-filled day of recognition and celebration for the VBCPS employees and all they have given to the division. We wish each of our retirees all the best as they turn the page in the next chapter of life. We also hope our retirees will refer to the Retirement Opportunity Program flyer in each of the goodie bags should they wish to return to the division in a part-time or full-time capacity. Celebrating our retirees reminds us that their positions, along with those who resigned, create vacancies that must be filled. As of June twenty-third, we have a total of three hundred and forty-two instructional resignations and a hundred and twelve instructional retirements, which brings us to a total of four hundred and fifty-two, fifty-four instructional vacancies created. This also includes instructional staff who are contracted on a temporary employment agreement. As we continue to address our staffing shortages through innovative recruitment strategies, our current data indicates two hundred and forty-one instructional vacancies with one hundred and sixteen openings at the elementary level, seventy-two for the middle schools, and fifty-three at the high schools. The Department of Human Resources continues to work collaboratively with school administrators and departments to fill these vacancies with a goal of being fully staffed for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Staffing through school administrators and the Department of Human Resources remains a high priority. Thank you, and this concludes our summer staffing updates presentation. Members of the Department of Human Resources are here to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, and we'll start with Mrs. Anderson.
So when you say we have instructional vacancies, how do you define that?
Those are our classroom teacher vacancies.
Just classroom? That does not include like PE, art, music?
Yes, ma'am. Those are classroom positions as well, so those are-
How about PE teachers?
Correct. Those are included in those vacancies.
Okay, so, but, okay, so you don't just consider like a homeroom as being the classroom teacher?
Correct, correct. That would be our instructional vacancies or any position that works directly with our students. So they have a caseload, students are enrolled in their class, they prepare daily instruction for those students. So those are your content specific as well as your electives.
How about counselors?
Yes, ma'am. Counselors are also included in that number.
So when you talk about instructional, you're talking about anybody who actually has to do with instructing students, correct?
Yes, and our school counselors are considered by the State Department as instructional positions, and that's why they also are included.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Mary?
Okay, I have a few for you. So I know that you said that we'll be getting a more extensive presentation by Mr. Freeman, but I just have a question about are we, are we scratching the surface at getting, filling the bus driver vacancies with everything that we've done, increasing the pay and recruitment incentives? Is that working?
So we'll go in much more detail, but you saw the chart that we displayed to be on track for the hiring process. We're not online with that yet. I'll be able to provide more detail of the timing factors that are related to how we compared with the Chesterfield model, which we had built our model up of. We're still working through it. We'll provide you a more detailed update on the twelfth school board meeting, but we have work to do there.
Okay, thank you. Because I know that something, Ms. Felton, we had discussed in Legislative Committee was the licensing requirements for bus drivers, and I know Mr. Andrews was going to be looking into that, and then we haven't met since then. I wonder if maybe we should get an update on that idea?
We can request that because it did go forward, and I guess due to the circumstances of how the administration changed over and getting them accustomed to the new, we were talking about, but we can't reach out and say-
Because this was a federal level.
Yes, we can reach out to you on that. So we can update.
And then on the next to the last two slides, it has instructional retirements and resignations, the four hundred and fifty-four number, and then down under current instructional vacancies, it has two hundred and forty-one. I assume that that two hundred and forty-one is accounting for all the new employees that we have come in and?
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
So on one slide, we have a total of resignations and retirements, four fifty-four, but then a total of two hundred and forty-one vacancies. So that kind of accounts for the new, new hires?
Yes, ma'am. That accounts for, yes, ma'am, the difference in the new hire contracts that we've been able to award.
That two forty-one number, do you know where we are compared to last year?
Not specifically. I do know we opened the school year with a little more than a hundred vacancies. Looking at it this early in the summer did not put us at a point where we were concerned because we were able to offer more early commitment contracts than we've ever done before in our history of hiring, which also leads us to know that we need to add more of those. So at this time, the two hundred and forty-one vacancies also, although concerning for probably those viewing, did not rise to the level of being a major concern for us in HR.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
What else?
You also had in that four-
In that four fifty-four, that included classified staff. And you have the number of classified vacancies we have as well right there, correct?
Now, on this particular chart, that actually included just instructional retirements. Our overall retirement numbers include all classified as well as instructional. And as of now, we have two hundred and sixty-nine classified openings. So that includes your TAs, your teacher assistants, nurse assistants, cafeteria, custodial, so all of your classified positions. So as of now, our vacancies for classified actually outnumber our vacancies for instructional openings. And that is because, and we had this discussion with some of the work group when we were having a conversation, is because our neighboring divisions really gave large incentives and pay increases for their classified staff, including our own city who started their pay at fifteen dollars an hour. So we are competing, traditionally, we've competed for our instructional staff, but now we're competing not just with school divisions, but with local agencies, companies, and our own city for our classified staff. Yes, I'm, hold on.
Ms. Melnick? Did you want me to add to the list? Okay. On average, how many Virginia teachers for tomorrow do we place every year, since you had ten this time?
I'll go back on this, I think last year we had about eight to ten. So it's usually on average, I'm thinking, and I'm good with this.
That's good, just an average.
It's about four to six on average.
Oh, okay.
Exactly. So this was actually an increase in a good year for us. And it's not always our current graduates. Sometimes we have students who return from previous years as well.
Oh, okay, and do you want, you, go ahead. This was part of mine.
This is part of the question. Can you again go over how they get those contracts? What, what they have to have to the future teachers?
Okay, sure. So the students participate in the elective, the course, they, senior, juniors, sorry. I'll do it.
Careful, it's on, sorry.
So the seniors, junior, seniors who are in that elective are, and they can be a junior too. They apply to, to, for the award. So they have to complete a series of tasks by the school. It's a little portfolio. They're interviewed, they're screened, and then they are, those, the individuals from those particular schools are selected, and they are the ones who receive the award. Then they receive the agreement. We do a little signing ceremony, as you know. And then, once they complete a teacher preparation program, so that could be a four-year program, which now many of the universities are returning to a four-year program. But nonetheless, some do decide that they're going to get their master's degree. They usually contact us. And once they're completed, they contact our office. We ask them to do it usually by Ju-, by January so that we're ready for them at, during the meet and greet window. And their name is also provided to the schools during that time. So-
Do you have a number of teachers or students that did not complete that to get that continuing contract when they come back, but they were in the program?
Yep.
And they still continue to stay in education, and four years later, they've come back. Do you have a number there?
Yes, we can, we can get that. Because we have the list, so the list is submitted, as you know, again, during the school board meeting. So we have those lists of students, and then each year, again, the students come back and say, yes, I'm a future teacher award winner. They just call and say, I'm a contract winner. We look up their information to ensure that they did, in fact, were award winner. And then, of course, we do the normal hiring process and make sure we have their-
But if they weren't an award winner and they were in the program, and they come back, and they're still homegrown, but they, they, for some reason or another, they didn't get the contract because they didn't have, turn in all the information, but I'm sure there's some of those too.
There are some, and some will notate that in their application, but they're not necessarily, they'll notate it on their application or their resume. But that's not something that we track.
Okay.
The students that we track are the ones who have come back for the award.
Okay.
So we have a list, again, we have a list of, I'm sure there's probably, I don't know if there was a way, be a way to get the list of students who participated that come, come from synergy, because it's a course that they signed for. And then we'd have to cross-reference their names with hiring. That would be the best way to, I'm not sure how to do that, all that, but that would be the best way to do that.
Okay.
And just to know, although we don't carry the statistics on those particular students, any former student of Virginia Beach who contacts us regarding a position will have a position with us. As you know, our data clearly shows that many of our teachers not only return seeking jobs here, they often want to teach at the school in which they attended, whether it be elementary, middle, or high school. We've also had conversations around broadening the number of contracts issued to those individuals. We started initially with one or two per school. We've now increased that, and we're also expanding next year to any student who is continuing to express an interest in education, that we also issue them a letter of intent as well. But we have not had any challenges with returning students who have the licensure and are qualified and find employment here with us in Virginia Beach.
Thank you.
We're still on first round speaker, so we'll go with Mrs. Franklin and Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Anderson after that.
Okay. I just had a question in regards to the current instructional vacancies. Do you know?
Okay, if you don't know off the top of your head, but if, like, for high school, we're seeing fifty-three.
Is that fairly evenly spread across the high schools? Or do we have certain high schools that we are having higher challenges with getting staff than others?
I wouldn't say it's equally divided because our enrollment numbers at our high schools vary. So schools already are staffed based on student enrollment numbers. We definitely, in our conversation and looking specifically at the positions that were open at high school, were not of major concern. Now, like with any division, our math positions in special education continue to be a challenge, but at the math, at the high school level right now, we actually only have one math vacancy. And so we're going to clap and hope it stays that way as well. So it really varies at each level, and even at elementary, when you look at that number, most people would be concerned. But when you factor in the fact we have fifty-five elementary schools. So again, I want to reassure you that at this point in time right now, in HR, staffing is not of a concern. And so we know we're moving along. We do have applicants. We're continuing to receive new applications every day. And June thirtieth, I would be happy to see that date come about because that is the last day in which our neighboring seven-five-seven schools could, will basically be able to poach on us.
I love the gentleman, yeah, one, there was a gentleman that just got hired, hired yesterday. I'm sorry, I keep forgetting the microphone. Just got hired yesterday, and I met him at the graduation, so he, you know, chasing people down. I was. And so I just checked, touched base with one, I was just checking on him, and he just got picked up. He has math, so. And we were lucky because he's certified actually in two, two subjects area, so I was, I was brilliant for him, so.
Exactly.
You're going to ask Ms. Franklin again?
Ms. Franklin?
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, did we ask the incoming applicants or the people that are signed up for, to become the bus driver, if there was anything specific in all of the things that we started offering that really encouraged them to apply and become part of the division? Is there, I'm just curious if there was one part of the changes, changes that we made that kind of stand out more than others?
Well, there were actually two items that the candidates spoke more frankly with us. That was the paid training. Obviously, that's a concern for anyone to have to go through an extensive training program without being paid, and the experience credit. In the past, you know, we, we had formulas that we used in terms of credible years of experience. And basically now, if you had a CDL and your former job required a CDL, then you would get year-for-year experience. And basically now, if you had a CDL and your former job required a CDL, then you would get year-for-year experience. And I I do wanna add, um, what we mainly saw at uh during the graduation ceremonies. Were our retirees um who really expressed an interest. And it doesn't matter whether they were a former bus driver or they worked for another organization. They liked the idea of being able to substitute um and and or work a part-time schedule.
Okay.
Especially at this pay rate and with the three thousand dollar recruitment. So we found our retirees liked the flexibility of a part-time schedule or subbing. Um, and we found those who were looking for a full-time position, I really appreciated the work experience credit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as well in the paid training. So each incentive um was met differently depending on where you were in your career.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Right, Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Felton.
Um, just to clarify, I know you explained it a minute ago, but I, then then the question came up about teacher assistants.
Yes.
They fall, and do they fall in the classified?
Yes ma'am, teacher assistants fall in classified.
Okay, alright.
So we have the instructional pay scale, and we have a classified pay scale. So you're, that's where your instructional, English, math, science, your four content areas, and all of your elective teachers. And the State Department classifies school counselors um as instructional, so they are all in the instructional.
Okay. Right.
Librarians.
Librarians also?
Yes ma'am.
Or in instructional?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Your library teachers, but your library assistants fall into classified.
Right, right. I I was just concerned about that, cause I, on, like, the um, um, the personnel report that we're getting ready to vote on tonight. We have a lot of teacher assistants, I noticed on there, quite, quite a few teacher assistants that have left the division, so.
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am.
I think that's very important to to remember that, you know, our teachers do a great job. But the reason they do a great job is they have a lot of teacher assistants helping them.
Correct.
And and we can't do, as, teachers can't do as great of a job as they're doing already without the teacher assistants' help, so.
Correct. In HR, we consider every position to be vital. Um, you cannot run a school um without every position, so every in position is is equally important as the other.
Right.
Hi, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you.
Chair Ryan, uh, I'd just like to say that after all the the um graduations that I attended two weeks ago, I had a meeting with a couple of bus drivers. And they extended and said how grateful they were, how appreciative they were of the uh raise that they got. And they were overly women. That was a long conversation with them, I was in a conversation with them about a, a hour and a half with a couple of them. They would say, wanna say thank to the division, and all of them have done for them as well, and they're looking forward to a great year. Uh, just to piggyback on what we're talking about, the teachers and teachers coming in, are we taking teachers with provisional license? Or and or uh the practice one and two? License coming, so it, but if they're coming with a, with a provisional license, they need to take the practice one to do. Uh, what kind of support are we giving them to make sure that we keep them in? Because that is a critical.
Great question.
Step for them, and we lose a lot of teachers because we don't, they don't get the support. So will we be giving them that support?
Yes ma'am, um, sometimes we'll get that question around provisional license. If a, if a teacher meets the criteria that's set about by the State Department. Um, then they're issued either a provisional or a conditional uh license. So we've been accepting provisional licenses forever. I began my career in Virginia Beach on a provisional teaching license. So I think sometimes there's some confusion around provisional and contractual. In terms of the praxis, we work very closely with um the Department of Planning, Growth, and Innovation as well. Um, Janine Gorm's camp actually has a grant that provides praxis and any other type testing support. So we will purchase materials, we will offer uh classes, um, we will match them up with someone who maybe teaches that content. Um, to provide support. So very seldom um have we had situations in Virginia Beach where. An individual was separated from employment due to their inability to pass those uh praxis uh tests.
That is good to know, and that you're speaking strongly about that, because that has been a concern for me with me with a lot of individuals coming in. And having to take those praxis tests, it's because it's like taking a whole nother course all over again, just be uh certified. So those are the teacher, they know exactly what I'm talking about.
Well, especially here in the state of Virginia, we have some of the highest requirements.
Right.
Um, in order to teach co- in comparison to many, many other states.
Right.
Yes ma'am.
And we have three years, so just be mindful that when they receive a provisional license, it's three years. When it is, when it's, when it is a career teacher, or, not career teacher, when it, they're in a career switchers program. That, that particular teacher license is dormant until activated. So they have three, three years, so they could, they possibly could finish in January. Received a full-time position, but they have to collect a certain number of days or whatever the criteria is set out by those programs. So then they can reactivate it again in the fall. So we typically will work with those candidates to say, listen, hold off, because you're gonna, you may not have, you may get, you may be gung-ho about getting that job in April. But you're not gonna meet the days. So don't activate it, otherwise a whole year is gone.
Thank you.
Great.
And just to add, we have a uh licensure department in in the Department of Human Resources. And we have three individuals who work in that department, and they are phenomenal. So they are constantly kept abreast of the changes, which are constant here lately, as every state is looking for ways in which. Uh, to make navigating the licensure process a little uh less burdensome and cumbersome. And so they attend training, they stay on it, and if we have um one of those situations where we, we're just not sh- for sure. It's easy for us to reach out to the State Department to receive guidance.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Owens, your follow-up?
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, um, how many, or it doesn't have to be a how many. Are we exploring uh the idea of job sharing positions and having retirees? Or just people who are not ready to commit to full-time, coming in and covering one-third or one-half? And then partnering with others, so maybe you have three teachers in that school in that one position, but we have it all the way covered with actual teachers.
We have not explored more than two.
It was.
Um, but in the history of hiring in Virginia Beach, we've always had the opportunity of job sharing. And so, I know, we, um, because you will find that with education being predominantly a female uh career choice for many. Um, you will find that some individuals just would prefer a part-time job, whether it be because they wanna spend more time at home with kids? Or just they have other things they would prefer to do. Uh, traditionally, the school will work closely with those employees, cause usually they contact their principal and say, you know, hey, I'm talking to so-and-so. We would like to consider job sharing, or we will keep a list in our office, maybe someone will contact us and say, I only want a part-time position. And we'll see if we can find a match for them. And so, that has always been an offer on the table. And probably what we need to do in our office, which we'll take note of, is probably uplift that communication a little bit more in advertising, so people know it's available.
Wonderful, that's what I was hoping, is that we can, when we're out here pushing, cause I love what you did with the uh graduations, and you guys were out there.
Yeah, you had a great time.
For people to know that if you can only commit right now to that halftime position, that we might be able to match you. And maybe they'll come in and like it, or like, hmm, you know what, I want those benefits next year, I'm gonna go ahead and come full-time. So if we can just cover some of these with some.
We give benefits to halftime too.
Right.
We didn't use to, cause I'm actually, the state all that, so.
It's usually, we give benefits to halftime.
We do now. We find. No, we didn't, we didn't anonymous.
Oh, yeah, I feel like we need to, um.
Yes.
For license.
Put that out.
Yes.
A little bit more.
Exactly.
And it's pretty great. I believe in my, in my brain, it does count for your retirement.
Yes ma'am, it does.
Yep. Not a full year for a year, but you know, but it's half a year worth. So it does count. All that has changed in the last few years.
Yeah, I think that we can promote that, but I love what we're doing, and the numbers are reflecting some good progress despite how we are um behind.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, so.
So does that cover it? Lots of good questions, and we look forward to an update in a few weeks of uh of the retreat?
Yes, thank you, thank you everyone.
So that leads us to our virtual Virginia presentation. With Dr. Shubridge and uh Mr. Gold, please pronounce your name for me. Okay, I was, didn't wanna.
This is Ryan, gonna pinch him. It's Dr. Shubridge. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Ryan. Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, we will provide the board with an update on the progress of our Virtual Learning Center. And our partnership with the Virginia Department of Education's Virtual Virginia. Dr. Sharon Shubridge, Director of Instruction and Technology, and Mr. Joel Goldenshue have been instrumental in the success of our program. And those students whose families selected for them to participate in virtual learning one hundred percent of the time this school year. So I would like to publicly thank them for the work that they've done in making Virtual Virginia a stellar program in Virginia Beach. Without further ado, the last task that Mr. Goldenshue has been given as the principal of the VLC. Is to share how great the program has been under his leadership, and we certainly appreciate his effort. Mr. Goldenshue?
Uh, good afternoon, Chairwoman Ryan, Vice Chair Melnick, and members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Joel Goldenshue, Principal of the Virtual Learning Center for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. As stated, I'm gonna provide a brief update of our virtual learning students um who attended their classes virtually at Virtual Virginia last school year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So due to families' concerns regarding COVID, and with the uncertainty of what the new school year would bring following the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Students in grades K through twelve were offered a virtual learning opportunity. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, BBCPS partnered with Virtual Virginia to provide one hundred percent virtual instruction for students whose families selected this option. So the initial enrollment period ended on July fifteenth for August twenty-four start date. While BBCPS was required to offer five days of face-to-face instruction, Virtual Virginia students had the flexibility to return to face-to-face instruction at any point during the school year. In response to the needs of students enrolled in Virtual Virginia, the administration and staff of the VLC developed a set of supports and interventions. The school-wide supports contain information sources and stakeholder resources designated to support student success. The handbook and family newsletter are hyperlinked in the presentation for your review. In addition, the VLC staff worked with all students by level to provide social emotional support outside of their Virtual Virginia class time. The targeted interventions were in place for students who are identified as not meeting with success. All processes and resources outlined serve to support our virtual learners. For our secondary students not meeting with success, our VLC staff collaborated with the Virtual Virginia staff to hold reinstatement conferences and develop pace recovery plans. In addition, our VLC staff provided targeted mentoring for students, special education tutoring sessions, and SOL prep and remediation for students. The goal of all supports and interventions was to supplement the instructions students received through Virtual Virginia. And also develop positive relationships with VLC staff that promoted student success. Based on the successes of the supports and interventions listed, the VLC staff plans to continue implementing these interventions for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Also, with input from site-based administrators and current VLC staff, we will implement new resources to include a BBCPS staff handbook. And resource guide for all of our school-based personnel. Over the course of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, there were three opportunities for students to enroll in Virtual Virginia. The initial enrollment period was prior to and up to, prior and up to July fifteenth. At that time, we had one thousand one hundred and seventy-six students enrolled. Over the course of the year, students from this initial group had the option to return face-to-face. Seven hundred and thirty-four of the original one thousand one hundred and seventy-six students, or sixty-two percent of those students, were still active at the end of the school year. A second opportunity, which we dubbed as January cohort, was opened through December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Three hundred and fourteen additional students enrolled in Virtual Virginia for semester two. And one hundred and fifty-two, or forty-eight percent of those students remained active in Virtual Virginia through the end of the school year. The final opportunity was open to families after the mask mandate was lifted in January. Two hundred and fifty-one additional students requested the opportunity to participate in Virtual Virginia in our February cohort. Only one hundred and fifty-seven, or sixty-three percent of those students were still active at the end of the school year. So in summary, a total of one thousand seven hundred and forty-one students enrolled in Virtual Virginia. And one thousand and forty-three were still active at the end of the school year. Our enrollment for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year will continue until the July fifteenth deadline. As of June twenty-seventh, we had four hundred and ninety-five confirmed students returning to Virtual Virginia next school year. Additional students are eligible to return and to remain enrolled in virtual learning, as our team can, our team continues to process enrollments on a rolling basis.
Four ninety-five.
Special education students whose services or service needs could not be met through Virtual Virginia will provide a comparable program in Virtual Virginia Beach. Students enrolled in classes concurrently taught by BBCPS teachers. Table outlines the number of students enrolled by level. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, seventy-three total students were enrolled. And as of June twenty-first of this school year, a total of forty-four students are enrolled for twenty-two, twenty-three.
May I interrupt a moment?
Sure.
Even though it's been explained before, can you explain for the benefit of the public, Virtual Virginia?
Virtual Virginia or Virtual Virginia?
Or, I mean, ver- ver- I'm sorry, Virtual Virginia Beach.
So Virtual Virginia Beach is our program where our students, our special education students are attending classes concurrently taught. So we have students face-to-face, and then our students are participating virtually, and our BBCPS staff at the schools are providing that instruction.
Thank you.
So I wanted to take a moment to also celebrate the successes of our Virtual Virginia students by level. Starting with our elementary students, Virtual Virginia assigns an overall numerical average for all elementary students. So this varies from the standard-based grading that our students receive in our BBCPS schools. For our elementary virtual students, we wanted to recognize both the pass rate by grade level. And more specifically, the total number of students who achieved a ninety percent or higher overall average to end the school year. So in total, one hundred and sixty-seven, or forty-three percent of the three hundred and eighty-five elementary students finished the school year with higher than a ninety percent overall average in their course. In elementary school, we're able to provide an overall pass rate as students are enrolled in a single course by grade level. In both middle and high school, the data we will share will be by course, as each student would have been enrolled in at least five courses to be considered full-time with Virtual Virginia. As you can see from the chart, there are six hundred and fifty-six courses students in sixth grade participated in. Ninety-two point six eight percent of those courses received a grade of D or better. These course numbers include both courses such as English, math, science, or social studies, as well as the students' electives courses. The honor roll and principles list columns indicate the number of students who received these accolades per quarter. Virtual Virginia students were recognized for the honor roll and principles list achievements by our VLC staff. So thirty-four percent of sixth graders, twenty-nine percent of seventh graders, and twenty-nine percent of eighth graders earned the distinction of honor roll or principles list while attending Virtual Virginia full-time. Again, full-time students in Virtual Virginia would have been enrolled in at least five full-time courses. The pass rate by course column represents those courses that received a grade of D or better. The honor roll and principles list column indicate the number of students who received these accolades per quarter. So twenty-nine percent of our ninth graders, twenty-four percent of our tenth graders, thirty percent of our eleventh graders. And nineteen percent of our twelfth graders earned the distinction of honor roll or principles list while attending Virtual Virginia full-time. Similar to middle school, these course enrollment numbers include both courses such as English, math, science, and social studies, as well as electives. At the conclusion of the Virtual Virginia school year, the VLC staff communicated with all Virginia Beach City Public Schools individually. Regarding students who did not meet with success in their virtual learning course. The VLC staff worked in conjunction with school-based staff to ensure families were notified and registered for in-person summer school offerings through BBCPS. Our homeschool counselors completed summer school registration for any of those courses that were needed. In addition, the VLC staff communicated with all families and school-based staff to support select students. As they prepared their transition back to face-to-face instruction for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, we'll start with Mrs. Franklin.
Okay, well, first of all, I love that we still have this option, um, and I do have a question about. Well, first of all, I love that we still have this option, um, and I do have a question about, um, uh, some of the concurrent teaching. Do we have, for example, I've had heard from a couple of parents throughout the year with some difficulties getting, um, logged on or accepted into the classroom, into the meeting. And, um, I did have a question. Is there an, an IT, um, person that they can call within VVA? Um, if they're having those kind of issues, I'm just curious from my, from my own knowledge.
Sure. So, part of the, um, the issue we ran into is Virtual Virginia is what the VLC staff oversaw, whereas our Virtual Virginia was site-based, so it was at the high school, middle school, or elementary. So there was, um, communication gaps, and we worked to close throughout the school year, but it was inevitable having kids from every single school.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Um, but we, when we received those, we had struggles at high schools and with connections and logging in. We would try to assist if we could at the VLC, even though they're home-based kids.
Okay.
Um, but then we would direct them to the, the TST, the Technology Support Technician, or ITS at that school. So we would do our best to give them a contact name and information and then follow up with the school, so that they knew they were having issues.
Okay. But there is, there is a, a person at the school that would be able to help, okay?
Yes, at every school, yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Manning.
I have a few. Um, so I was a parent of a student in, um, Virtual Virginia two years ago. So things might be different now than then, but some of the concerns I had then, um, well, first of all, the Virtual Virginia enrollment totals on slide four, does that include if a student is just taking one class?
No, ma'am. So that would be the students that are full-time, and that's the five or more, that was the, the threshold we use to determine.
Okay. Okay. Okay, gotcha. So, um, as a parent, I wasn't able to see my students' grades in Virtual Virginia. It's not in parent view. Where do parents go to find a student's grade?
So for our Virtual Virginia students, when we enroll them, it's automated, so they get an automated email to parent wood from Virtual Virginia. They get an automatic account, and that parent auditor account has a username and password where they can go in and they can see. It's a lot like what we can see in parent views, Virginia Beach parents. It's just the Virtual Virginia platform. So the challenge is, we have the two platforms, where we have Virginia Beach and then, of course, Virtual Virginia.
I never got that with, in, would that, would a parent whose child is only enrolled in one or two classes get that?
They would have received it as well, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, um, it coincides with the enrollment, because we need all of the parents' contact information, email, and phone number to enroll. And as soon, we found out early in the process that as soon as we enroll a student in one or more classes, the parent immediately got notification before we could even.
Okay, alright. And again, this was two years ago, um, but I never, I never, I was never able to, I mean, fortunately, I didn't have any concerns and it was okay, but, um, I'm glad to hear that that's happening now, so. Okay, great, thank you.
And then we, in addition, we input all of our students' final grades at the secondary level in synergy at Digital Campus, so that when the year ends, parents log into parent view and they can see their students' final report cards. So it does finalize at the elementary level. They individually get those report cards sent from their school principal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Holtz.
Okay, thank you. Um, what do you see as the future for Virtual Virginia? I'm gonna say, and I say that because many of the people that enrolled this year were in concern about COVID-nineteen. So do you expect your enrollment to go down in the future and will we always have Virtual Virginia?
I'm not, in terms of the longevity, I'm not, you know, sure what the, the long-range plan would be. I do know that Virtual Virginia has responded to our feedback in terms of, you know, what we would like to see for our Virginia Beach students and offering, you know, more courses and more offers, especially at the secondary level that align. Um, but that part-time, I can see the expansion of the part-time supplemental piece. That's the, one of the goals they shared with us. But how we work in partnership with them, I think that's to be determined by our doc school.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome, yeah.
I'll just add that, so yes, we've had a lot of conversation on what it would look like to continue to offer uh, our students the opportunity to learn full-time virtually, and that's, you know, great benefits for those who have taken advantage of it, as evidenced by the students who've done well this year. So we have about fifty percent, if you calculate the, uh, four hundred and ninety-five students who are already registered for next year, so that there is interest in not only students continuing, but also parents as well. So we'll continue to explore what that looks like for Virginia Beach. Right now, Virtual Virginia is working very well for us, as, as a matter of fact. Uh, we get tired of quite often from the Virtual Virginia staff, and I can only attribute that to, uh, the team here for making it work really well. A lot of people coming to the table to make it work. And we saw some bumps early on, for sure, uh, and we worked through those, but I don't see it going away immediately, uh, because the interest is just there, not only for students, but for teachers as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. And actually, I'm, I'm glad to hear, uh, that, Dr. Rogers, because, um, I've had the opportunity to talk to a student who, uh, is taking summer classes and, uh, will be taking some classes again next year. And it's really opened some opportunities to be able to participate in other programs like ATC and still meet the requirements of a class that wasn't gonna be able to fit somewhere. And so I, I think it's one of those, uh, additional things that our division brings that allows some flexibility to take advantage of these other programs that we have. Do you have any, uh, numbers about what our summer session is looking like, or do we keep those numbers about summer sessions?
So not my, we just handle the full-time students, that would just be the fall, spring. And then we, um, as a, as a team, we offer our Virginia Beach, we didn't, you know, we didn't sell Virtual Virginia as a summer school offering, and we also directed them to Dr. Schubridge's office with the digital campus offerings as well.
Gotcha.
So what you're speaking about is like, we have the asynchronous virtual classes for students in the summer through the Virginia Beach Digital Campus. Um, we have filled every section we had open, so we had eighty-one sections open. We have about two thousand five hundred students who are participating in some sort of virtual class this summer. To your point of either, um, filling a gap, uh, making up a class, these are the full-time, full-year programs, but they're either trying to get ahead, um, catch up on a language, catch up on a science course, um, in order to participate in the ATC or some other program. So we're really excited about that offering. That's already been part of Virginia Beach, and to be able to continue that, um, in the summers to support our students.
Wonderful. Thank you. And it sounded like all of those slots are full. Is that something that we need to, uh, be watching for any expansion needs at any point if we're certain people?
Um, so it's interesting, there are certain classes that fill very quickly, like HPE nine and ten.
Okay.
Um, and we usually have a waitlist for those. We've started to share it with our counselors, to not forget that students can still do those during the school year. So my daughter actually did it during the four-by-four in the first semester of this school year.
Okay.
Um, and it freed up a study block for her. So she wanted the study block to be able to do some of the other coursework, and she took that, um, virtually through the VVDC. So there are some things we look at that are really popular, so we always make sure we have extra courses for, like, the HPE nine and ten. But there are some things like geometry that we might have one section, and sometimes they don't quite make. But if we have students interested, our thing is we're trying to make sure we support what students need. Seniors are always first. Uh, my team makes a priority to make sure seniors are taken care of, either stay on track or if they wanna finish in August, how can we support that work? So we, we always look, um, at what our numbers were for the previous summer to see if there's some adjustments we need to make um, in anticipation of the next school year.
Wonderful. Thank you.
For support.
Mrs. Anderson.
So, uh, I, maybe I should know this, but I'm not sure, so I'll ask, uh, can Virtual Virginia do four-by-four? Or do they already do four-by-four?
They do. So the course offering.
Are all their courses four-by-four, or?
Select courses for high school, they're predominantly four-by-four, and we enrolled for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year next year, all of our high school students in those four-by-four offerings. There are exceptions to that. Some of their AP courses are only year-long, uh, similar to what we have here in Virginia Beach. But it does give students, you know, following what we're doing in our high schools, that flexibility to add those courses each semester.
So basically, though, some of our students, according to Ms. Manning, are students that are in face-to-face but are also taking virtual Virgin, some virtual Virginia classes. Is that, is that happening?
Correct. Their, their homeschool counselors handle that registration, yes.
Right.
So they can take one or, one or more.
Right. Just an opportunity to kinda get ahead. Thank you.
Anybody else? I, I re, I mentioned it months ago, but I'll mention it again, cause you did, you did make reference to other districts that when, we were at the VSBA Annual Conference in Williamsburg in November, and I attended, and I think some of my colleagues were with me, the Virtual Virginia session with the Virtual Virginia people. And, and they highly tooted our division. I mean, and that was still, even for us, and, you know, it was still very much in its infancy. And yet, given that, I know we never sit on our laurels, and it's just always great to see us, you know, striving to do better and better.
Yep. And the team in place at the VLC, they really did a phenomenal job.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Dr. Spence, it's forecast time once again.
It is. This is the first quarter forecast for the next, uh, s- school year. Begins officially in two days. Uh, and so, um, you should have a copy in there. We'll get there. I'll note just one correction real quick. Where it says meeting date in the right-hand column, that should say action. That's an action item column. So apologies for that. Um.
Action item.
Okay.
And so we'll, uh, we'll just do, and I normally do a quick run-through of these, a reminder that this is not a static document, that this can change over time, and then obviously you all control the agenda, but this is our forecast of topics that we know we need to have in front of you, and that, um, some of them you'll see are, are topics that you've requested as well. So, and, um, a reminder at the retreat, we also have some time usually set aside to talk about topics you'd like to see us discuss in workshop, for example, over the course of the school year. And so there's an opportunity to, to, um, have input at the retreat on how this shapes up for the school year, so. Um, so, uh, for the next meeting, which is, um, July twelfth, we do have two updates. Uh, you heard Mr. Freeman mention there'll be a transportation update, get into a little bit more detail about how the hiring process is going and what that looks like and what we're looking like as far as routing and everything else. And then there'll be an update on Compass of twenty twenty-five. This is an annual update on progress on the division's strategic goals. And, uh, we usually do that at the tru, at the retreat. We're gonna do that one on the twelfth in workshop. I'm not gonna go necessarily through all the action items, but, uh, if you have questions about those, certainly happy to discuss those. You'll know, we don't really have anything plugged in for the eighteenth to nineteenth. That is your retreat. That's a separate agenda, and you all have been in communication about that. The August ninth meeting, we have a workshop that also will do on, uh, varsity sports entry prices. That was a request of a board member. We also give you an update on where we are with the move to the Holland Road Annex. As you recall, that's gonna happen in, uh, late October, early November, so let you know how that is progressing. And, uh, you'll note there, we've got, uh, cell phones listed, and, um, so I'm just gonna signal now, we're, we're looking again at cell phones and the issues that have come up with cell phones, and I know that all of you have, um, had questions about that as well. And so we'll bring that for a workshop discussion in August to talk about what we're thinking about with cellphone policies for the next year, regulations in particular, not policies. Your policies are already aligned.
I have noticed, though, that other divisions are tackling the cellphone issue.
Yes, ma'am. They're quite, yeah. So, you know, it, it is, uh, it's, it's a big issue for us, and the balance, which has been discussed over the years, is not overburdening teachers and administrators with enforcement issues, but also making sure that we can eliminate some of the distractions that are seen, so we'll talk more about that in detail in August. Um, twenty-third, we have, um, we will have a, a overview of the recovery school, which you'll learn a little bit about. They get to retreat, but much more detail by August twenty-third. Um, what's going on with the concept of a recovery school here in Virginia Beach. And then Detol will, uh, talk with you all about what's going on with library books and how we're complying with, um, with new law, but also some things that we've been thinking about. If you switch to, uh, September the thirteenth, so now we're into, um, the school year has begun. So our first item there, we'll be bringing you, uh, Summer Learning and School Opening Review. And then we'll give you an update on how, um, CARES funds are being expended. As you know, that's a, a, a pot of money that has a several-year spin-down, so it's been down, um, by the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So we'll give you an update on, on where that's going. I forgot to mention, um, you know, tonight you have an information, uh, item, and you have, um, a public hearing on the PPEA process, so an update on where we are in that process. You'd be asked to take action in August, um, moving that process forward, so that's, uh, action item, and I'll just mention that one.
It's night.
And then under, um, September twenty-seventh, you have, um, a facilities update for School Division Services. Um, and you should anticipate, and you'll hear more about that timeline at the retreat, another update on the Educational Equity Plan at the twenty-seventh meeting, and then we'll get into our second quarter forecast. So I'll just pause there and see if there are any questions. You know, um, as I said, subject to change, and obviously if, um, one, one thing to talk about now is if there's anything that seems to be missing for you. But that can also be discussed at the retreat.
Ms. Manning's. I'm sorry, Mrs. Manning.
Uh, yeah, just two questions. Um, I have not seen anything regarding what we're gonna be discussing at the retreat. Um, do we have a list of what we're discussing?
I will resend out the draft. The latest, the, the latest draft was, um, it, it was one of those board emails, so I'll be happy to resend it.
Okay, that would be great.
And, and just to reiterate, it, it's the final two hours of the second day that's still being finalized, but otherwise it is.
Okay, great, yeah. If I could, I don't, I, I know we've had problems with emails, so maybe it just didn't come first, probably. Um, and then, um, something I know we normally get are presentation testing scores, and I don't recall getting that lately. Um, when is, when will that be? Like AP testing scores, RI, DRA, PALs?
I think those, um, annually come in, in the, like, October timeframe, so it'll be in the second quarter.
Okay.
Because, um, we're still getting, we're still getting in finalized data from the state in, in September. And the AP scores and those kind of things don't get finalized until September as well, so it's usually second quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so if anything strikes you after today's meeting, just follow up with the superintendent. And so we will con- conclude this workshop and reconvene in Chamber six o'clock for the formal meeting, but this workshop is, is adjourned.